...supervisors meeting, first meeting of 2014 of January 7th, in this Santa Barbara County courthouse historic mural room, which has lots of significance. In a while, we're gonna have an item that is gonna provide the board and the public a presentation about the history of this room, which I think is gonna be a treat for anyone watching and everyone present here today. This is Supervisor Lavignino's request. He anticipates he'll be chair. And as such, I thought it was a great idea to be able to host this first meeting here in the court, in the, in the mural room. Now, if we could have roll call, Ms. Clerk?
Mr. Carbajal?
Here.
Ms. Wolf?
Here.
Ms. Farr?
Here.
Mr. Adam?
Here.
Mr. Lavignino?
Here. We will now proceed to the pledge of allegiance. If everybody could rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I see that, actually, no, I think I understand where we're headed next. We are now proceeding to call for our elections of chair and vice chair. Is there a motion to appoint our new chair for 2014?
Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Supervisor Lavignino to the position of chair.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to nominate Mr. Lavignino to be appointed as chair for 2014. Not having any further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous.
I voted for it.
Just a little bit more business, Mr. Lavignino, then you get to come over here. Is there a motion to entertain, to appoint a vice chair?
Mr. Chair, I will nominate Supervisor Wolf as vice chair.
Motion's been made?
I'll second that.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Great. We, here, we have our chair and vice chair for 2014. And now, it is my tradition and honor to present the new gavel. Yours is a lot shinier and brand-new, Mr. Lavignino, to my colleague, Mr. Lavignino, who will be the chair for 2014. Want to switch? We're now gonna switch.
Thank you Supervisor Carbajal. As is customary, I was hoping you'd have some remarks about the last year and your services chair.
Look at that, I do. I just... Didn't know how I knew about that.
Start the clock.
That's a good one. Well, this was an exciting year for the Board of Supervisors. I'm honored to have served this chair for this past year. Despite our occasional differences, I appreciate our board's collegial and productive work and relationship. Our county experienced many changes and we achieved many things in 2013. First, we welcomed a number of individuals to our county family, including Supervisor Adam, CEO, new CEO, Mona Miasato, General Services Director, Matt Pontes, Social Services Director, Daniel Nielsen, and our new county council, Mike Gazoni. Again, we passed a balanced budget using fiscal restraint as we move out of the worst recession since the Depression. We continued to prioritize critical public health and safety services, added to our strategic reserve, and negotiated modest employee increases. Our board increased funding for deferred maintenance and initiated an effort to devise a plan to better address our deferred maintenance needs. We moved forward with the new $80 million North County jail project, and we received a new $38.9 million grant from the state for expansion of this project. We increased operation hours in, in the existing North County jail to enhance public safety. We worked to begin implementation of the Affordable Care Act within our county. We completed the snapshot of poverty study, which now puts a face, or a better face, in understanding poverty in our region. We completed an overall assessment and began to implement the restructuring and improvement in alcohol, drug, and mental health services department. We opened the Franklin Trail in Carpinteria. We opened the new Cuyama Library and Family Resource Center in, in Cuyama. We opened the re, and remodeled, we opened the remodeled and expanded Joseph Centeno Betaravia Government Center in Santa Maria. We completed the final phase of the Santa Maria Levy Project. We completed the Union Valley Parkway Project. We funded and broke ground on Pescadero Lofts Affordable Housing and Street Lighting Efficiency Projects in Isla Vista. We adopted an agriculture buffer ordinance, just to name a few of our successes. In 2014, I look forward to our board continuing to focus on the many challenges that lie ahead: maintaining fiscal stability, opening the North County Jail, continued improvements of ADMHS, and continuing to create a more resilient and sustainable county government. Like all democracies or democratic bodies, we have our occasional differences, but we do our best to find common ground and consensus whenever possible. I believe diversity of geography and perspectives are what makes our county special, and each one of us brings an important perspective to our deliberations. There is a lot more that unites us than divides us, and I believe that working together, we will continue to make Santa Barbara County's future bright. Finally, I want to thank all of our county staff for their, your service, commitment, and hard work over the past year, each and every day, for helping make our community the extraordinary place that it is to live and play. Now I look forward to my colleague Supervisor Lavignino taking over his chair. At the very least, I am certain that you'll like his jokes a lot better than mine. He's pretty good at that stuff. Thank you very much.
Very good Supervisor Carbajal. Now, the outgoing chair has it easy, because you get to talk about what happened. I'm supposed to be up here and pretend like I'm Nostradamus and talk about what's going to happen, which is impossible. But I guess there's a few things I can predict, and that is, on many occasions, we will have our normal room, full of concerned citizens, who will sit through hours of tedious testimony, so that they'll provide their own few minutes where they feel that they're part of the decision-making process in our government. And I see my job as chair to, is to make sure that each of them has their voice heard, be respectful of their time as well, so that when we have timed certain items, that we get through our agendas in a manner where it's as easy as possible for our public. I can also predict that we'll probably find ourselves in some very tough decision-making processes, where there is no real clear right or wrong. And my guess is there will also be times when our patience is tested with each other and our buttons get pushed. But my goal is to be as fair and objective as possible with each of you, making sure that each has the opportunity to express their opinion in a collegial manner. I really wanna thank General Services, CEO's staff, the clerk's office, and all of those with CSB TV for making today happen. I just thought, I've been in here before, and my dad had told stories about how this is where, when he first started working for the Board of Supervisors, this is the meeting room that they held it in. And I came in here, I thought, you know what, this is a really cool room, and I don't really know that much about it. It's a definitely a gem of the Central Coast. And I just thought that we don't have a lot of business to do today, so, since this was somewhat of a ceremonial meeting, that, that this would be a good place to have it. So I wanna thank all of those who, who made today possible. And I also want to thank, my family is here, so I want to recognize my wife Marion, who now will see me even less. My dad Larry, and my super stepmom Donna, along with my staff. Becky Grant is here, and Cory Bantalon, and Sandy Agalos in the back as well. So, thank all of you for being here today, and what I'm gonna do now is ask if any other board members would like to address the public. Supervisor Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, you know, I, I think that Supervisor Carbajal's comments point out and remind all of us again the great breadth and depth of services and issues that county government provides every day of the year, and all of you make that possible. It's also made possible because of the great collegiality, camaraderie, and the humor that I think the teamwork that happens both within the county departments, in between county departments, and also on the Board of Supervisors, both in open and enclosed session. So, it's not an accident that we are doing so well and have had so many successes this last year, and it's because of all of your, your hard work. I think that probably the staff knows, but the public may not know, that when you're chair of the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors, there's a lot that you do behind the scenes that the public never really sees. So it's a big job, and I really wanna thank both Supervisor Carbajal for all of his efforts this past year, and now Supervisor Lavignino for stepping into that role. I know that he's gonna do an awesome job as well. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are we good? Supervisor Wolf?
Well, I just wanna really briefly thank everyone for being here today. This is, you know, it's a wonderful idea Supervisor Lavignino, to reflect on our past as we look forward to the future. And I also wanna thank all of our staff, those are that are, those that are behind their desks working, or in their cars working, and to all of you who are here today. We could not do what we do without the support and energy and devotion to our county without the staff behind us. And to my fellow board members, I, I wanna thank you for our time that we serve together, and as Supervisor Farr says, it certainly falls a lot to the board chair. And I wanna thank Supervisor Carbajal for leading us this past year in some very challenging times, but as you said, we, I believe we are a stronger board and a stronger community because of what we have been doing these past few years, particularly our last year. And to Supervisor Lavignino, I, I know and I trust that you're going to be a superb board chair, and I truly do look forward to our, our next year working together. So thank you very much. Thank you all, and thank you to the public, who watches our board meetings at home, comes to speak to us, because without your input, it would make our decision-making a little bit more difficult. So we appreciate hearing from you, and I look forward to this next year. Thank you.
Supervisor Adam?
I guess these are hot, huh? You don't have to push the button.
And I can't silence you either.
And you can't silence me. Perfect. Now I've got it. I just wanted to add in a little bit of thanks to Chairman Carbajal for making my first year here an excellent experience. You run an excellent meeting, and thank you very much. You will serve as a role model when I'm chair on how to run the meetings. And I think that you're gonna do a great job, Steve, and, and I look forward to getting on with it.
All right. Great. And having said that, we have, we'll have time now for our public comment. This is gonna be a little bit difficult, because we've got public comment coming from different areas, but we also have a stopwatch up here, so we aren't, we aren't going away from the three minutes. Do we have any speaker slips, Mr. Allen?
We have three requests to speak this morning, all here in Santa Barbara. We're gonna start with Dr. Robert Johns, to be followed by Robert Burke. Dr. Johns?
Good morning, Dr. Johns. I think it's fitting that, as my first day as chair, my first speaker is Dr. Johns. I'm honored.
This is quite an auspicious occasion, and I would think that the board would send people home before you hear from me. Right, Carbajal? So, what I have discovered, and I'm going to do a little retrospect since we're going back '05, '06, when I was discriminated against in this county. I applied for a position, by the way, I'm a PhD clinical psychologist, I have a master's, I have a PhD, and I was discriminated against. I won't go into the details, but I will be going to the details in further sessions. Now what I find here San Obabran's, and I call all San Obabran's to listen carefully to me, because what we have here is an unholy political alliance among the Dixiecrats. And I've explained the Dixiecrats to be Carbajal, Farr, and, these are southern racists. They pretend to be progressive, okay? But they're southern racist Dixiecrats, and they would throw a black man under the bus, and you know what I mean by that. They was, they threw me under the bus, but I'm still here standing. Now, I can't see how much time I have, but this unholy alliance, led by Carbajal, and if we look at the San Ynez Valley, what we find there is not only racism, but Nazism. I won't go any further than that, because I will continue, I will continue with that. And Farr, I'm surprised that you and Wolf, who attend synagogue, who has persons from the Holocaust, the two of you, the two of you make a political alliance. And Carbajal, we know what you're all about. You're all about keeping the immigrant people in their status. Only the people who have status, that's Mexican-American people, can come to you. All other persons will be denied. That includes black people also. This unholy alliance, we have to look at it. It's Nazism from the valley, the environmentalists and Wolf, you lead those environment, and they steal all the money, because there are nonprofit organizations that work with all types of people that are being denied that oil money. And Farr, you should open up the warming centers, it's cold enough out there for homeless people. But what you'll see is these not, these so-called Democrats inflict pain on homeless people or mentally ill people. They inflict pain.
Dr. Johns, your time is, your time is up.
Thank you so much, and I hope everyone has a happy new year.
Our next, our next speaker is Robert Burke.
Mr. Chair, members. A fellow veteran is in jail because of a hit-and-run and alcohol. We want people to be held responsible for the consequences of their actions. Also, he came back the person we sent him away to protect us from. He is responsible for his actions as an individual. We, as a community, are responsible for putting him in harms way that altered his mind and not helping him to repair that damage. This is my diagnosis for post-traumatic stress disorder. The first one is four pages long, the second is three pages long. Twenty-two veterans and active-duty personnel suicide a day. What is warm at noon is cold at midnight. The veterans' suicide hotline receives 1,500 calls a day. This is a wealthy nation on an abundant planet. The lower taxes mantra, government is evil aphorism, and the austerity budget policy is a poverty consciousness based upon fear. Fear that there is not enough, and an elitist mentality that more stuff means I am better than you are. Fear is an unacceptable basis upon which to form public or personal policy. Placing money, concrete buildings, and asphalt roads as more important than people, housing, and social services, is too high of a price to pay. Returning veterans have symptoms and emotions that they do not know how to handle, and turn self, turn to self-medication through drugs and alcohol to drown the pain. They sometimes continue their marauder mentality that we trained them to have by turning to criminal behavior. History and science has shown us that criminal behavior blooms after war. Jesse James was a guerrilla warrior during the Civil War and a bank robber after it. We expect them to trade their worn combat boots for goody-two shoes and a twinkle of an eye. We have an epidemic. If this were a virus or food poisoning, the public would demand that the government use its brains and brawn to effect an immediate remedy. The returning soldier with post-traumatic stress disorder is a very sick person. That is why we call it a disorder and not a choice. The purpose of therapy is to make the person larger than the symptoms, to change the compulsive behavior into intelligent choices, to change the testosterone, "I can do it by myself, leave me alone," and isolated belligerence, to real men ask for help, to change screaming nightmares into happy days. We do not need new ideas. We have what works. We do not have enough of it. We have two, we have two victims. The woman is dead, the soldier is in jail. This tragedy could have prevented. Mr. Chair, members?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, our final speaker is Shane Stark.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Happy New Year. Happy New Year, new CEO, new county council. I have, actually have two items for your board, one of which is for myself, and the others which I'm speaking as the president of the Education Fund of the League of Women Voters. First, for myself, I would request that your board adjourn this meeting in memory of my colleague and friend Marv Levine, who passed last month. Marv was a lawyer for the county council's office for 24 years, for between 1968 and 1992. He served this county well, he was smart, he was funny, he was a hard worker, he was a dedicated public servant. Before he, he was assistant county council and acting county council, and before he served this county, he served this country. He was a paratrooper in the United States Army. I will miss him. He was a credit to the county, and I would ask you adjourn in his memory. That's for myself. The second matter for the League of Women Voters, and I wanna make clear, these comments are not aimed at the board or any board member. As you know, there's an election year coming up, and I feel I should comment about something. The New Year's message from Wendy McCaw, the owner and publisher of the Santa Barbara News Press, our local, our local newspaper, called people who appealed a board decision in the Santa Maria Energy Project, which I acknowledge is a serious, sensitive, and complex matter, which reasonable minds can and do differ. Called them terrorists, a bunch of terrorists, and in my opinion, this comment is false, reprehensible, and hypocritical. And I'm here to urge the board, to the extent that you can, not to tolerate such rhetoric, and to maintain the civility that you, to your credit, you have, you have enumerated among, amongst yourself, and to insist upon it from other people. Calling enviros, which is what they are, they're environmentalists, terrorists, is just, first, it's wrong. A terrorist, if I'm understanding, is a person who favors the use of violence, whether it's targeted or indiscriminate, in order to make a political point. In a post-2009/11 environment, this is a very serious allegation to level, especially when it is, I think, wholly inappropriate. The members of the League of Women Voters, and there were some, some people, on my understanding, a former 5th District Planning Commissioner, who spoke to your board in favor of this particular appeal, I know these people. They are responsible, respectable citizens, both of North County and South County. They are not terrorists.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
If you could wrap.
I'm wrapping it up.
Okay.
Real quick. The name-calling and demagoguery is simply not appropriate means of political discourse. It is the 21st century equivalent of red-baiting, and the reason I say it is hypocritical is because the same First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution that protects Mrs. McCaw's right to publish in her newspaper pretty much anything she wants, also protects those Santa Barbara citizens who want to appeal the decision to your Board of Supervisors. So I ask your board again, please maintain civility, please insist on civility, and with that, I wish you a happy, successful, financially prudent, and wise New Year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comment. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the December 6th? Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. See, Supervisor Farr asked me before the meeting if she could make some comments, and I already blew her off for the first mistake. Sorry about that Supervisor Farr, go ahead.
That's all right, I certainly forgive you. I just wanted to bring up Lake Kachuma, because it has been in the news for a couple of different reasons recently, at least over, over the break that the board took over the holiday season. The first to do with the quagga mussel that we've been very concerned about, not getting into Lake Kachuma, not infesting that, which was found then in Ventura County, and the actions that we decided to take on at least an interim basis to protect the lake, in addition to what we've already been doing. And also, the level of the lake, which if any of you have driven by it recently, is extremely low. So I have asked Mr. Farim or Patty, they're, they're both here, if either one or both of them want to come up and comment on what's happening at Lake Kachuma, just briefly. Well, that's part of, that's the issue.
Good morning, Chair Lavignino, members of the board. A week before the holiday break... break, Piru, Lake Piru, which is in Ventura County, about 60 miles away, put out a press release saying that they had findings of quagga mussel in the lake. The day before, the 25th, got a call from the President of COME, Kachuma Operations and Maintenance Board. They were expressing their concern about the restrictions and our quarantine process. We do have a very restrictive, stiff inspection process at the lake, and Lake Kachuma does not have quagga mussels in it. We heard their request. They wanted a even more strict or stricter requirement. In discussions with Tom Farham and the Water Agency, we made one temporary change to our conditions, and that was all boats would be quarantined, except those that are already tagged within the County of Santa Barbara. We have a task force that we've put together. We will be discussing some of the options with the Water Agency. We'll have COME involved, and we'll come back to the board with the options.
Great. Anybody have any questions from the board? Okay, Mr. Farham?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Regarding the lake level at Lake Kachuma, it's something that's been in the news, and I think a lot of people have been following. It's perhaps the lowest level the lake's been in, in many, many years, and the weather outlook, at least for January, is not looking well. And as such, we've developed a, a process working with our South Coast Kachuma users to start meeting and talking about this. The, the lake level, as low as it looks, the actual volume that's left in there for use for municipals is even less. So it's something we're monitoring now very closely, very concerned about, and I think working with the CEO's office will be providing some more information to your board in the near future.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes for the December 16, 2013 meeting?
Second.
Motion's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes. Mr. Allen, are there any changes to the administrative calendar?
Chairman Levino, members of the board, I have a couple of announcements. First of all, on item A1 today, this was a resolution of commendation honoring Christina Lopez. She's in the Public Works Department. She was our January 2014 Employee of the Month, and regrettably, Ms. Lopez is not feeling well and could not make it today, so we just need to continue that to our meeting on the 21st. Secondly, item A4, Community Services item, this letter was the, to consider recommendations regarding the county inclusionary housing ordinance, affordable housing, inclusionary housing requirements, and in lieu inclusionary housing fees, annual update. And this item, there was an addendum posted, this was amended, the recommendations of this item, and that was posted last Friday, and it's available outside the room with the agendas. And that's all I have.
Very good. Mr. Allen, do any of my colleagues wish to pull any items? Start over there with Peter.
I'd like to pull 17.
17, Supervisor Wolf, none, Supervisor Carbaugh, nothing, Supervisor Farr. Good. Okay. Mr. Allen, can you read 17, please?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, item A17 is from Planning and Development. The request that the board set a hearing for your meeting on February 18th to consider the allocation of the 2014 Coastal Resource Enhancement Fund grants.
Okay. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, my problem is really just editorial. I think there's, on the note on the bottom, it's talking about speakers other than applicants, and applicants will have five minutes. Speakers other than applicants will be limited to three minutes of testimony per proposal. And so if we took the, the strict language of that, we could be here for a long time because if everybody got three minutes per proposal, who wasn't an applicant who could only talk for five minutes on theirs, you see what I'm, what I'm saying? I mean, if there was 10, 10 applications, which I think there's 30?
There was 18 at last, but I think we've, Mr. Allen, do you want to address how we probably would handle that?
Chairman Levino, members of the board, we did discuss this yesterday at the Agenda Review Meeting, and what we will do is, in the interim between the set hearing and the item, we'll take a look at that, and then at the hearing itself, the chair could always set reasonable limits on the amount of time that each individual would get based on the number of, of grants that they'd like to speak on. So.
Okay. Well, if you think that that's adequate, I was just worried about winding up with, you know, 30 minutes per, per person, because if they want to comment on 10 and they get three minutes per application, then we'll be here for a very long day.
I'm not sure the chair would allow that, but.
Well, I don't know. If you put it in writing, maybe you gotta do it. I don't know.
I understand the concern, yes.
Supervisor Carbaugh?
I just want you to know that I'm going to take credit for all your successes and for all your blunders. You weren't paying attention last year.
I think there were, there were probably a couple of minutes there where I dozed off, so. All right.
Chair Levino, Supervisor Adam, just want to make clear that the set hearing letter has staff's recommendation for timing, but the board has great discretion in this area for when it comes to the board as to how much time you actually allow, and you can actually adapt that even as late as the day of the hearing.
Okay. Very good. Then so can I get a motion to approve, so we're going to approve the items on the A agenda with the changes that Mr. Allen made?
So moved.
Second.
It moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Passes. We will move right on to our departmental agenda items. Oh, do we have any speaker slips on anything on the A agenda?
We have no requests.
Okay. Very good. So we're moving on to item one, the county executive office. Mr. Allen?
Chairman Levino, members of the board, item one is in the county executive office. It's a hearing to consider Board of Supervisor appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
All right. So there's not really a presentation on this, and I guess we're going to do this the way seems to be the easiest, is why don't we just go A through S, and we will have Mr. Allen read each one, and then if we're okay with the way it is, we'll just move on. And if we have a problem with one of the items, then we will raise your hand and we can address it at that point. How's that work? Mr. Allen, you want to start with A?
Recommendation A is the Mental Health Commission, and this is one regular member and one alternate member. Currently Supervisor Levino serves as the regular member and Supervisor Adam is the alternate.
I'm good with that. Everybody's good. Okay. B?
Recommendation B is for the Area Aging, Agency on Aging. There's one regular member to the Advisory Council, and that's currently Supervisor Levino.
I'm okay with that, but I thought that might should go to the oldest member of the Board of Supervisors, but since we don't want to go there, I'll go ahead and keep it. I'm not sure who that is.
I don't know, but I'm the youngest.
I know. So we'll go to number three.
Number three, C, is the Library Advisory Committee, one regular member, and currently that Supervisor Farr.
That's good. Okay.
Recommendation D, this is the Retirement Board of the Santa Barbara County Employees' Retirement System. There's one regular member, and that has been Supervisor Wolf, and his term expired on December 31, 2013.
Okay, is there a?
And I would like to continue.
You would like to continue. Okay. Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Recommendation E is Community Action Commission, Santa Barbara County, one regular member and one alternate member. Currently Supervisor Carbaugh is the regular member and Supervisor Levino is the alternate.
Very good. Okay.
Recommendation F is SenCal Health, one regular member and one alternate. Currently the regular member is Supervisor Wolf, and the alternate is Supervisor Adam.
We're all good?
The next recommendation is G, that's Beacon. That's the Beach Erosion Authority for Control Operations and Nourishment. There's two regular members. Those are currently Supervisor Carbaugh and Supervisor Wolf.
Wouldn't give it to you.
We're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and leave that one.
All right. Recommendation H is the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness. Two regular members as co-chairs. Those are currently Supervisor Levino as the North County co-chair, and Supervisor Farr as the South County co-chair.
Okay, good with that.
Next recommendation is I, that's the Law Library Board of Trustees, and the chair serves as the ex officio member, so that would shift to the chair, but.
Very good. I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and take that, and then I think there'll be an appointment down the road, somebody that's been doing this for quite a while.
Got it. The next recommendation is the Kids Network Policy Council. There's two members who serve as chair and vice chair. Currently Supervisor Adam is the chair, Supervisor Wolf serves as the vice chair.
Okay.
Number K, letter K, Legislative Program Committee, two regular members, that Supervisor Carbaugh and Supervisor Farr.
Okay.
I is the Debt Advisory Committee, one regular member and one alternate member. That Supervisor Levino serves as the regular member and Supervisor Adam is the alternate.
And we'd like to see if we can make a change there. If it's, if it's okay, we will, I'd like to move that we have Supervisor Adam as the appointed member, and I will serve as the alternate.
Right. Recommendation M is for the Adult and Aging Network. One chair of the Policy Council and one co-chair. Currently Supervisor Farr is the chair and Supervisor Carbaugh is the co-chair.
As long as Dorine's chair.
Recommendation N is the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. Two regular members, one for North County, one for South County. Currently Supervisor Adam is the North County regular member, and Supervisor Wolf is the South County member. Recommendation O, that's First Five and Families Commission of Santa Barbara County. One regular and one alternate member. Currently Supervisor Carbaugh is the regular member and Supervisor Adam is the alternate member.
Mr. Adam, you want to be regular? I'm always glad to give it to you.
No, that's okay.
Are you sure?
Leave it right there.
All right. Let the record reflect, I offered.
If you can make, that's, that's very generous of you.
I keep trying to share my assignments. Nobody wants them. I'll, I'll keep them.
Recommendation, Recommendation P is the Multi-Jurisdictional Solid Waste Task Force. Two regular members. Those are currently Supervisor Carbaugh and Supervisor Farr.
I would love to get on that if anybody wants to.
If you want any help, I'm, I'm here for you.
Thank you.
I'm just curious if there's ever been, is it, some of these, it's interesting because they have two regular members and one's in North County, one's in South County, and then other times we have it, it's just hodgepodge. It could be too north or too south. And I'm not interested in the Solid Waste Task Force, but.
If I could just shed a little bit of light on this particular one, I, I think it varies. Sometimes there's rhyme and reason. This one in particular deals with Tahiquas and the issues of solid waste from Mid-County, which is the 3rd District, all the way down to the South, for the most part. And that's why traditionally it's been two supervisors from the South. The reason I got involved with it more early on is because of my interest in formerly Supervisor Schwartz also played a key role in moving the study, which was the Foundation for Conversion Technology, forward, and then it got shelved, and then it eventually, the issue got restarted again. But to my knowledge, that's why it, it seats two members from the South, and I'm glad to continue.
Mr. Chair, I think traditionally the, the 3rd District Supervisor has always been on this because Tahiquas, as well as the landfill in the San Onofre Valley, or in the 3rd District. So that's why I'd like to stay on as well. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Mr. Allen, we'll move forward.
The next recommendation is Q. That's the Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee. There are two regular members and one alternate member. And I'd just like to note for the board that currently Supervisor Farr and Supervisor Levino serve as regular members and Supervisor Adam is the alternate. The committee structure for this committee does not allow for an alternate member, so the appropriate action today for the board would just be to, to appoint two regular members.
Okay. You interested Supervisor Farr? Stay on? Okay. I'm interested in staying on as well, so let's move on to NACO.
That's Recommendation R. NACO, one regular member and one alternate member. The Supervisor Carbaugh is the regular member and Supervisor Wolf serves as the alternate.
No one's going to take their life in their hands and challenge Supervisor Carbaugh on this one. Oh, I didn't know, I didn't want to speak for you Supervisor Wolf.
No, no.
Are you good? Here's, okay.
Okay. And then finally, Recommendation S is the CSAC, California State Association of Counties. One regular member and one alternate. Currently Supervisor Farr is the regular member and Supervisor Adam serves as the alternate.
Both good with that? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would like to continue. I've just been on one year since Supervisor Gray was off, and there's a lot to learn, so I'd like to continue.
Absolutely. Okay, very good. So I think we've made it through with the changes that we've got. Is there a motion to?
Any public speaker.
Oh, do we have any public speakers on one?
No requests to speak.
Okay, no requests to speak.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve this item per attachment B, and the changes that were recommended were the Law Library Board of Trustees appointed Supervisor Levino, and the other change was the Debt Advisory Committee. Supervisor Adam will be the appointed regular member, and Levino as the alternate. And then finally, the elimination of the alternate member on the Indian Gaming Local Community Benefit Committee.
Very good.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0, and we are moving on to item number two. Mr. Allen?
Chair Levino, members of the board, item number two is the County Clerk, Recorder, Assessor. It's a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the county facilities maintenance ordinance certification.
All right, great. Mr. Holland, it's all yours.
Good morning. I'm Chairman Levino, members of the board. I'm Joe Holland. I'm here acting in my capacity as registrar of voters, and I'm here to notify you that we have certified the petition for the county facilities maintenance ordinance. The petition was delivered to our office on November 30th, and it had 20,561 signatures. It needed 13,200 to pass, and we determined that 15,862 of the signatures were valid, so it is a certified petition. And I think there are some choices that your board has before you that I believe County Council will articulate for you.
Okay. Mr. Gazani?
Chair and supervisors, the board agenda letter accurately describes the three choices the board has, beginning with number one, which is to simply adopt the ordinance unaltered, that is verbatim in its present form, or number two, to order the matter submitted to the voters in the upcoming June 3 election, and related to both of the, both one and two are the third option of ordering staff to prepare a report about fiscal impacts. Now, that fiscal impacts report is different than the statement that the next board agenda item also discusses that can come from the auditor about fiscal impacts. And the primary difference is that in the next agenda item, the fiscal statement that the auditor provides becomes part of the ballot materials that go to the voters, whereas this option, number three, helps to inform your choices as to what to do. So when we get to the next item, there's an option of a fiscal impact statement or fiscal analysis, excuse me, from the auditor that goes to the voters. And just to continue along, there's a separate item that occurs, and that's from county council under the Elections Code, which is an impartial analysis. And that impartial analysis, under the case law, is normally analyzed for omissions, inaccuracies, or misleading statements. And as part of that impartial analysis, I expect we would address the relationship between this proposed measure and the provisions of the County Budget Act that normally direct the Board of Supervisors to adopt a budget. That relationship was addressed in a 2006 case by our 2nd District Court of Appeal in a case called Totten, the Board of Supervisors out of Ventura County. And the holding in that case was that as to minimum future budgets for public safety agencies, the initiative process can't describe minimum budgets, but that case did not go further than that to address minimum budgets for categories other than public safety, safety agencies. So I'm going a little far on this discussion of impartial analysis, just so you understand that the voters, if this is presented to the voters, would receive a fiscal analysis from the auditor, as well as an impartial analysis from county council, and there would be a discussion about the County Budget Act. But as county council and an impartial statement, we don't make a ruling on the legality of something. We just note the. something, we just note the framework that it operates in.
Great. Thank you very much. And Supervisor Adam, since this is your baby, I guess.
My baby, yeah.
Why don't you lead off?
Thank you. Yeah, this is an initiative that was wholly created by my office, and I want to thank my staff, Bob Nelson and Stuart Johnson, for all their hard work on this. And I want to, I want to thank everybody who made signature gathering possible. That was almost impossible. It was very difficult, not impossible, but we did it. The main thing here is that we not let the condition of our assets get any worse. And, you know, this is not intended to defer, to address the deferred maintenance issue. This is to make sure that we don't defer any more maintenance. We have to do our annual maintenance because we're getting in a position, I think, and we've discussed this on numerous occasions, but that we have to stop ignoring the maintenance and at least have that as a bottom line. So that being said, we have the choices today that Mr. Gazoni has identified, and I would like to hear from my colleagues what their thoughts are about how we should proceed.
Okay. First off, Mr. Allen, do we have any public speakers on this item?
No request to speak.
Okay. Members of the Board, Supervisor Carbohall?
Thank you. I'm still trying to reconcile the two staff reports and the fiscal impact studies that you referenced. So help me understand the, again, Mr. Gazoni, maybe I'm, I just want to make sure I'm fully understanding it, because I'm not sure that I do. Number three in the staff report, number two staff report, and then how that differs from the options in number three. I'm a little fuzzy as to the auditor controller review. What's the difference, and can you do both, or one or the other, or just want to understand that a little bit?
Chair Lavignino and Supervisor Carbohall, the difference is primarily one of timing. The Board has the option today on the first item that you have in front of you, with the three options of ordering a report from staff that helps to inform your decision on whether to simply adopt the ordinance unaltered or to send it to the voters. If you decide to send the matter to the voters, that would be the time that the auditor separately prepares a fiscal analysis that becomes part of the ballot materials that are presented to the voters by the elections official. So the auditor has a statutory role once you decide to send the matter to the voters if you ask the auditor for that fiscal analysis.
So this would be in addition to that mandated fiscal report that the auditor's going to do no matter what?
My only correction of that would be that the Board may, but not must, direct the auditor to prepare that fiscal analysis, so it's not a mandatory.
That's for, that's for staff report number three?
Correct.
Okay. And this, this is in addition to what that would be in.
So the item before you right now, this item number three about order a report from appropriate staff agencies, you could do that, and then if you later decide to send the matter to the voters, you could at that time also direct, you have the option of directing the auditor to prepare a fiscal analysis.
So it's a two-step process.
But if you are thinking of sending it to the voters, you would not direct the auditor today to prepare a fiscal analysis, but if you're thinking that's the direction you're going, just for scheduling purposes, because this is a pretty tight schedule, you might provide at least the thought that that might be coming at a future meeting, so the auditor could begin work on that.
Supervisor Farr, while Supervisor Carbohall is thinking?
I'm continuing to think.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, you know, clearly Supervisor Adam, we've known since last year how important this issue is to you, and clearly this was a monumental effort to get it to this point. From my perspective, I think that, you know, the most prudent course, as we always try to do, is to be able to assess the fiscal impacts. And kind of my take on Mr. Gazoni's explanation is that the initial analysis of fiscal impacts is more to do with the county and how we're operating, as opposed to an official fiscal impact analysis that would go on a ballot statement, which may not necessarily cover the same things. Am I correct in that?
Chair Lavignino and Supervisor Farr, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, and so I'm actually supportive of number three because it doesn't preclude us from taking the actions outlined in one or two later. It just gives us this additional information to look at before we go ahead and go forward and decide, you know, which one we want to choose. So that's kind of where I'm at on this right now.
Supervisor Wolf?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would agree with Supervisor Farr that we move to, to move on on number three. The one issue that I do want to bring up, and Counsel Gazoni talked about the fiscal impact, but this is in Chapter Two, and it's in our attachment, Section 9111, there are other items that we can ask staff to look at within the 30-day window. And I suggest that we, that we do that. There may indeed not be any impact. I'm guessing that some of these things will not be impacted, but we should at least ask staff to look at all of those potential impacts, and then where there is no impact, let us know. Where there is, give us that information. So I think, so I would agree with number three, and then moving through with all of the items that we have the authority to ask for information. And then we can move into Agenda Item Three, talking about the auditors, the issue with the auditor, and then the mandatory County Council's language.
Okay, very good. Supervisor Carbohall?
Thank you. I'm still trying to fully understand the measure, and I've read the entire thing, and measures always provide an exercise for me of trying to understand them. I certainly understand the premise that I think Supervisor Adam is attempting to achieve here, and on one hand, I want to be supportive of that, but on the other hand, obviously I've always expressed and have some concerns about, well, what does it really mean? As we look to fund the county jail and all the public safety issues we have before us and all the other issues, I'm just trying to understand how we reconcile that balance, and I'm trying to understand how the measure helps us do that or not. So I would be inclined to provide, the more analysis and information, the better, because one, we could understand it. I think as Supervisor Farr said, that we could understand whether we consider Option One or Two in the future, or not. But certainly, I lean towards, towards more information for us and the public. So that would be where I would be headed. And despite some concerns that I have about this, in trying to understand all the full breadth of the complexity of this issue, I also want to, despite my strong reservations and concerns about this, want to congratulate Mr. Adams, because this was a significant feat. And it doesn't matter whether you agree with the measure or not, it's the democratic process, and for step one, you were able to achieve that, so congratulations.
Supervisor Farr?
Mr. Chair, just to add on to what Supervisor Wolf asked for in this other part of the discussion, in looking at the ordinance language itself, and maybe this would be covered when staff comes back, but I had a couple of questions. The first one, it says that they're not being, our buildings are not being maintained in nationally-accepted standards. And I'm not quite sure what that means, what that standard is, and I guess I would hope that Mr. McGalpin would help us with that, because I always thought that we were kind of looking at the statewide standard and kind of comparing ourselves within the state. So I'd kind of like to know the difference between the state standards and the nationally-accepted standards and what that means there. Also, it's using the existing condition of the roads, parks, and buildings as the baseline, and I'm just wondering, you know, what staff would consider, how we would measure that? Or would there be photographs taken? You know, what does the measurement use that that would be the baseline for? And, and then there's language about not being able to carry this forward by issuing any debt unless it was approved by the voters. And so I'm not, in the fluid nature of county budgeting the way it is now for, for these functions, you know, if, I'm just wondering if this went forward and it was approved, and then we needed more money because we were putting more money into this and there was less money for other things in the same budget, and then we needed to issue debt for that, how does that work? So those are just a couple of things that jumped out at me for the language of the ordinance itself. I'd like to have staff come back with. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Adam?
CEO, Ms. Allen.
We could certainly come back. If your, if your Board asks us to do the report, we can certainly come back with that information in the report.
Very good. Okay. I think you've heard from folks.
Okay, well, then I'll make a motion to do the study.
Supervisor Allen? Just before you make the motion, if the motion is going to involve the report, it will probably be helpful to discuss what meeting that's going to come back, and maybe to be further informed by the election official on that, because they have some very tight deadlines for publication of the material. We just want to make sure that the meeting that you direct actually fits into their, into their grid.
Okay. Mr. Holland, what are our statutory limitations here? What do we need to do for you?
I believe the report needs to be received within 30 days. So that would be February 4th, it would be that next meeting. And then you have 10 days within which to choose either one or two of your choices, either to adopt it as an ordinance or have it go before the voters. So the next meeting for that would be February 11th. So those are the two drop-dead dates, February 4th to receive the report, and then February 11th for your Board to make the decision.
Okay. Supervisor Carbohall?
If I also, thank you, Mr. Holland. If I also understood, Mr. Gazoni, you said if we're inclined to proceed with also the future fiscal analysis by the auditor, to kind of telegraph that now so that there's, so I'm, I don't know, maybe it might be good for my colleagues to either reaffirm what they're thinking or not, but I for one will reiterate what I said earlier, the more information, the better. So I would be inclined to, in the future, also proceed with that, and I just want to give you that information. I don't know.
And I see that the auditor is here and has heard that upfront. I just thought it would be helpful for the auditor's staffing.
The rest of my colleagues, I don't know if they've addressed that.
Well, do we not address that in item three?
That's a, that's a different.
Chair Lavignino and Supervisor Adam, actually, the item three would be the report by all of the staff agencies, and what I was suggesting was just a heads-up to the auditor.
On that one, item three?
That, that if the Board is thinking that you may be sending this to the voters, a heads-up to the auditor now, so he can, you know, move his staff around as needed for that analysis.
Getting ahead of myself, right?
CEO, Ms. Allen?
I think we're getting confused with item three, so we're talking about item three, I mean, number three of item two before you.
Yes.
Is whether the Board wishes to.
Yes.
Direct staff to do the report. My office would take the lead in assembling that information for your Board. The other item is the next agenda item, yes.
Okay. So we'll get to item three after we deal with number three of item two.
Item three.
So Supervisor Adam?
I will make the motion that we, we do item, I'm sorry, damn it, I was not going to say item. Number three, and when we do that, make sure that we, excuse me, that we discuss what happens if we don't do this, along with what happens if we do.
Okay, so the fiscal impact would be also proactive, and if we just went status quo and didn't do what that, what that impact would be?
To do.
Is that possible to come up with that? CEO?
Yes, we can include that in the Board Letter.
Okay, very good. So that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded? All those in favor? Oh, wait, Mr. Gazoni wants to?
So you were informed by the election official on dates, and I think that one way to do this would just be to direct the report, and to direct the report return at the meeting on February 4th.
Correct. Okay. February 4th, so that's included in your motion?
Included in my motion.
It is, and the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Okay. Very good.
Unanimous, I like it.
So that takes us to number three. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, item number three is from County Executive Office. It's a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the county facilities' maintenance ordinance ballot options.
Okay, and our CEOs can handle this?
Good morning, Chair Lavignino and Board Members. So this item was prepared to give you more information, not knowing what action you would take on item two. So this item provides information to you about your options regarding what ballot information you would like if you decide to place this item on the ballot. As County Council mentioned, one of the items is to direct the auditor controller to prepare a fiscal impact statement. You have two other options as well, and that is you can, as a Board, decide to author an argument for or against the item, and the filing period for that is by February 26th. And if you choose to do that, then you can, you also have the option of writing the rebuttal argument, or authorizing others to write the rebuttal argument, and that would be due March 10th. Again, you do not have to make those decisions today. Since we are coming back on February 4th, you can make that determination at that time.
Okay, so I think since we're going to come back with the report on February 4th, it would make sense that that's, that we hold off until then? Can I get a motion for that? I mean, does that?
So moved.
So moved.
It's premature.
Seconded? Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So we'll bring that back on February 4th as well. And let's take a five-minute break before we go on to item number four.
All in favor?
Oh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
It's 5-0.
Chairman Lavignino, members of the Board, this is item four from General Services. It's a hearing to receive and file a presentation regarding the history of the Santa Barbara County Courthouse and the mural room.
Very good. We have Mr. Uli, who's going to be directing us today. Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Chair, and welcome to your room. This room is the Board's Assembly Room, was designed as the Board's Assembly Room back in 1925, '06, '07, and '08. Building was completed just about four months before the stock market crashed, so we're living a little bit of history in a cycle. Just by quick note, I left on the dais for each of you a packet of cards that are available downstairs in the booth. This is the latest addition to the building, and that is a clock gallery that's at the top of the tower above us. So the history of the building, back in 1919, the civic leaders from all corners of the county had decided that the building that they were in was inadequate. It was a Grecian courthouse, Richesonian Hall of Records. There were basically five or six buildings on this parcel that made up county government. Hall of Records was a completely separate building, the courts were a completely separate building, and the Board met in basically a courtroom, if you will, because it was a multipurpose room. And they outgrew that building, and they decided to hold a design competition to build a more grand civic building that held all of the functions of county government and city government and history. So they held that competition, and a number of firms from around the country submitted designs, and it was costed out and decided we couldn't afford this. You know, back then, we're talking 1919, you know, $500,000 was a lot of money. Well, $500,000 is still a lot of money, but not as much as it was back then. And they put those thoughts on the shelf. And then June 29th, 1925, and the reason why I remember that date is not because it was an earthquake in Santa Barbara, it's also my birthday, so it's really, really easy to remember that date, not that I'm that old. But nonetheless. But nonetheless, June 29th was an earthquake at 6:30 in the morning that basically destroyed the city of Santa Barbara. All of the unreinforced masonry buildings, many of the downtown buildings collapsed, including the Hall of Records, the courthouse, and the end of a stone jail, which was located where our current Hall of Records is located. So, the board then resurrected some of those designs that had occurred in 1919. But the firm that was hired to do the actual design was the number-two winner in that competition. And how that firm was hired, Mr. Chair, your predecessor, Leo Presker, a forceful individual who was the chair 18 years of the 20 years he was on the board.
Did you guys hear that?
Well, I did, but did you know? Did you know he was married to an addict?
No.
Well, there you have that.
We would not be standing in this building if it were not for Mr. Presker. Mr. Presker hopped on the train to go to San Francisco because in 1906, if you recall, that city had a pretty devastating event. So, Presker went up there to find out, so how did you guys do it? Well, when he was sitting on the train, as we all do when we travel, you talk to the person next to you, you put your iPhone in and listen to music, or you do whatever you do, but most time you find out who's sitting next to you and what do they do. So, Presker drew up this conversation with the man sitting next to him, who happened to be William Mosher. William Mosher is the third person in an architectural firm called Mosher, three generations of architects located in San Francisco. Mosher happened to be traveling up from Los Angeles in a project he was doing down there and heading back home. So, Presker drew up this conversation with Mosher, said, you know what? We just had this big earthquake in Santa Barbara, we're looking to find out, you know, an architect. And he said, well, I did a design for that building. He was hired. That was the interview, basically. And so, William Mosher and company became the architect for this building. This building really is patterned after a castle in southern Spain. If you look outside and glance across the Hall of Records, the annex where the public defender is, the main arch over and into this wing, around the corner and off to the jail, you'll notice that each of those buildings are different in their detailing. The building began its construction in the Hall of Records. The Hall of Records has the most intricate of hand-touched detail in it, but that's where that detail stops. Because if they carried that all the way through the building, it wouldn't be a $1.3 million building, it would be a 4-point-something-million-dollar building because of all of the detailed handwork. So, Joe, your part of the building is really awesome, and I really applaud you for the work that you're doing over there to keep it restored. What happened after the Hall of Records was the concrete work began by sandblasting the formwork to expose the hard grain in the wood, make that the form, pour the concrete in it, and then the concrete takes on the grain of the wood. And then, you stain that concrete, and it looks like wood. So, when you walk around the building, it all looks like it's wood, but it's really concrete. So, as the building then progressed around the corner, the board didn't have the money to build a jail. The project did not include the construction of a jail for budgetary reasons. But because Leo Presker was Leo Presker, he just told the contractor to start building it because obviously we need a jail. You've got to house these people who are breaking the law. So, the footing was dug, and the jail went up, and it was because Leo said to do it. And that's just the way it worked back then. There was no public discussion about it. And in fact, interestingly enough, your board has only met in this room three basic times from 1928 or so, when the building was completed, until 1965, when the board and general government moved across the street to what some would say could qualify as a landmark, others might differ. The next time your board met in this room was when the building turned 75, and that was just short of 10 years ago and today. When the board was meeting here on a regular basis, what we see before us was more for ceremony. Most of the decision-making wasn't governed by a law that didn't exist, and that's the open meeting law. The board and its staff would meet in a room right behind this image of Fremont in what's called the committee room, which is now a filing room for the Superior Court. The ceiling in that room is still there and protected. And the board would make their decisions in that room, and then enter this room behind the screen behind you, Mr. Chair, and come in and make a presence about it and announce what was going to be. And that was it. And that panel behind you is actually your desk. So, there is a panel that folds down, and there are two drawers for the chair to have pens and postie notes and what have you. And each of the members of the board have what's referred to as a veragenios. The veragenios are four boxes. There's two on either side. So, during hearing day, each of those boxes would be pulled up behind each of the supervisors and unfold. And a veragenios is a moving desk, basically. You know, in Spanish days, you would just lift them up, put them on the ship, and go across wherever, and you took your desk with you, basically. It was early-day telecommuting, I would imagine. And the room has always been designed to be multipurposed. The houser and rope that are in front of you were designed to be removed during hearing day and then put back on non-hearing days. The benches, which were designed, that the audience are sitting on, originally were designed to hold what one cowhide could cover. That's how their size was determined. And for a while, it was actually cowhide and fur, but you can imagine how uncomfortable that might be after a short period of time. So, that was removed and nogahide put on. And the reason why they're designed this way is so that you could clear the room and have a reception. So, the room did more than just your hearing. The room is also surrounded by a fantastic mural, one of the largest murals in a hearing room in the state of California. 4,200 square feet of muslin or canvas have been glued to the wall with basically paste done by Daniel Sayer Grozbeck. Grozbeck was really an interesting character. Supervisor Adam, you would love this guy. Cigarette hanging out of his mouth, paint can, and just what do you want? And he would take paint out of his garage, whatever he had in his garage in the day, and come down here and paint this mural. He had a couple of helpers and himself. He was paid $9,000 to do this work in 1928. He didn't finish it because the $9,000 was more important to him than finishing the work, and he was out of here. Soon as he got the money, he was gone. He didn't even sign his painting back in the back corner. One of his helpers did. This room is probably the most detailed room in the entire complex, and for proper reason because it is the board's assembly room. So, this mural, being 80-some years old, is seeing its life. It currently is the top priority of the Courthouse Legacy Foundation for restoration. The story really captures not only Santa Barbara's history, but the state of California's history. And it begins in the back corner to my left, to some of your right, with the Chumash tribe, the capturing of the local natives, and then progresses through to Cabrillo Landing. Now, here's where Grozbeck's humor comes out. You've got to love somebody who's got some humor because without that, it is just really a boring world to be in. Grozbeck was a Hollywood painter. He did huge backdrops for silent films and then early talkies. So, this scene right here with Grozbeck, it's difficult to see because we're staring into the television lights. Back in the day when your board was meeting here, there was no television, so we didn't have to stare into lights. But nonetheless, you see Cabrillo coming ashore, and if you can pick out the detail, there's just a lot going on, cannons and supplies and what have you. But unfortunately, nobody put the sails down or took the anchor up on the boat, ships that are off in the distance there. So, somebody missed that. And the hats that these individuals are wearing are probably 90 years old by the time they're wearing these hats. So, they were already into antiques. And then, right behind you, on your right-hand side and to our left, is the transfer of the territory from the Spanish rule to the Mexican rule. And again, that antique hat comes into play. And then, right behind the screen, which you, it's difficult for you to see from where you're sitting, and we can barely see it from where we are, are cannons. This goes to Santa Barbara's history and Santa Barbara County's history, really, because it is all the same place. And that is, we record things based on things that have happened in our past so that we can remember where we've been and where we might be going. The cannons are in there because during the Presidio days, a cannon was taken from the Presidio. Stolen, some say, borrowed, others say, but nonetheless, it was taken and then lost. And so, that's why we have a street named Cannon Predito, Lost Cannon. And that's why the cannon is in the mural, to remind us of that story. And then, on the back wall in front of you, as you look and behind me, is the construction of the mission. California has 21 missions. The center of mission is the 10th of those missions and referred to as the queen of the missions. It's one of the only missions in California that continued to be a mission under its design. Many other missions have either fallen down or gone to secular means or reconstructed in other locations. This one is continuing on in its current location. And then, the story comes back, and now we're getting close to when California becomes a state. There was a short period of time there in 1847, 1848, somewhere in that realm, where California was in flux. It didn't become a state until 1850, but there were a couple of years in there where California was its own country. It was a free man's land, basically, a frontier. Any man's rule was his gun, basically, was what it was. Fremont comes over the hill, which we now call San Ynez Mountains and Highway 154, after spending the night in the San Ynez Valley. And he asked a farmer over there, so how can I get down to the coast quickly? He didn't want to come around Gaviota, which most of us now drive through, because it was not a tunnel and a highway, it was a riverbed, which is just off to the right there as you come down the coast. That was the trail he would have to come down if he were going to do it. He was sent by the President of the United States to keep calm, not to start a war, but just to be on hand just in case something occurred. So, Fremont wanted to take a shortcut. So, when he was in San Ynez Valley, the farmer said, well, you know, there's this little cow trail that goes up and over the hill, but it's a little dangerous. So, you know, if you're willing, then God bless you, and you might make it down there, you might lose some people. That's Highway 154 now. So, he comes down, and he takes a flag and a mast off of a US frigate that had been in the channel waiting for him, and they planted it in the sand and put up the US flag with however many stars there were back in that day. That flagpole is now part of the flagpole at the corner of the property, is the bottom mast of that flagpole with another flagpole on top of it, and that makes up the flagpole in this property. That flagpole had been here since the beginning of the county seat, but it used to be at the corner of Figueroa and Ana Capa Street. When this building was constructed, it was moved to Santa Barbara and Annaboo Street and then restored. And then, the story continues along the wall with three major pieces of what California's economic engine are and what Santa Barbara County's economic engine is, basically. You've got minerals, oil and those kinds of things, agriculture and stock farming and the like. This is really the history of Santa Barbara County. The history of California is all found in this building. I could go on for a little while more, as you could tell, but I'll leave it at that, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Supervisor Carball, and he wants to know how we get into the committee room so that... Go back to the old days.
We have some very important committee work to do.
Well, you'll have to open the door and shove over the file cabinet and get down the stairs, but other than that...
I'm not sure if I remember correctly whether it was UCSB or both, the courthouse, that it was built on taxation or revenues from oil. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Could you elaborate on that just a little?
Yeah, this is quite, again...
And since we are having an oil discussion, it's just, you know, so important.
It is, well, it is a very fascinating story, and I think the reason this makes it interesting, Mr. Chair, is because your predecessor, Mr. Presker, made it happen. And here's basically what happened. This building was designed, there was a cost estimate produced. It was going to cost $700,000 to build this building. And we all know how our estimating skills are. Sometimes we're on and sometimes we're not, and that's why we add 20% just for good measure. It was estimated at $700,000. A bond measure was put out to the voters, and the voters didn't pass it. They said, no way, and we're going to pay $700,000 to build a building. So, it went around the cycle a couple of times, and eventually, the bond measure was passed, $700,000. Then, it was reestimated at $900,000. And by the time the building was done, it was $1.35 million. And so, in the evolution of that time, oil had been discovered on Elwood by the Barnesdale Oil Company. And because Mr. Presker either drove, or I don't know how he got down here for the meetings, I imagine he drove probably a Model A or Packard. It wasn't a red Triumph. I had a word with your dad earlier that Triumph is just amazing. Anyway, so he drove his Packard down here, and they discovered oil off of Elwood. So, he pulled off the road and said, hmm, that looks like revenue source to me. And he stopped and talked, eventually got hold of the CEO of the Barnesdale Oil Company, and he said, listen, I think his name was Charles, there's a note in the file about this. He said, you're going to help me pay for my courthouse. And the oil man said, well, you can't make me. And he said, watch. And we've been doing it ever since.
Could you get us the list of all the oil CEOs in the county for our chairman?
There's just like two of them, I think. And one of them just recently passed away.
There in lies the problem. Supervisor Wolf has a question.
First of all, Mr. Uli, thank you so much. I mean, you are an amazing wealth of information. I was just wondering if you could touch on the clock... I was just wondering if you could touch on the clock tower, because you had given me a little tour of that, and I just think it's fascinating, and maybe just quickly talk a little bit about that.
This building is host to the only Seth Thomas Tower clock in the United States that is fully ADA accessible. There is no other tower clock in the country that you can just get off the elevator and go see. I've been to a number of them, not as many as some others, but I was recently in Boston at the old meeting house, and to get to that Seth Thomas clock, you've gotta go up a pair of stairs that literally is not any wider than the podium I'm standing next to. And the stairs, God forbid you have to come down them, are really not meant for human This clock in this room, in this building, is the largest model of the Seth Thomas clock that that company made. It has three trains to it. There's a chime train, an hour train, or a strike train, and a time train. That clock has been ticking since it was installed in 1929 until, well, it's still ticking now, but right upstairs, but not seen by anyone, in a closet, behind a door, you know, with stuff stored in it. And there were two individuals who came upon that clock, one couple living here in town and another living in New Hampshire, and they decided, once they saw the clock, that they would fund not only the restoration of the clock itself, but convert the room to a clock gallery. So now what we see in a short period of time of a couple of years, there are people coming to this building who only care about clocks. They could really, they don't even know that it's in a courthouse building. They come here for the clock. And I placed on your dais a pack of cards, given to the courthouse by one of the funders of that clock room, just to give you a sense of what's in that room. And there is 21st century equipment attached to that clock that will tell you down to the millionth of a second how accurate that clock is. And there are people who monitor this around the world, depending, you know, telling you how the pendulum is doing, or what weight the device needs, and how fast it's going, and how slow it's going, and this knob and that knob. And whether or not humidity is more important than temperature, or one metal is better than the next, I mean, it's just amazing what, what this building attracts in terms of attention. Judge Ochoa has a, a great story. There was a visitor to his courtroom, one of the original courtrooms down the hall, Department One. This particular judge, who was a judge in, in Helsinki, I believe, travels the world, and wherever he goes, he stops in a courthouse and sits during the proceeding to find out, well, what do they do in other countries about, about law? And once, once the proceeding was over, he knocked on the door of the, of the chambers, and the bailiff let him in, and they had a conversation. I'm sure they had lunch, and what, they did whatever they did, but the, the judge from overseas told Judge Ochoa that this was the most magnificent courthouse he'd ever been in. So, so we have a lot to be thankful for, we have a lot to be prideful about, and this is the representation of the county of Santa Barbara. If you Googled the county of Santa Barbara, this is the image that pops up. It represents all of us.
Outstanding, Wolf. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
I, I, I was excited about coming over here, but then when I started doing some research on really what the mural room was all about, and especially the painter, I mean, he had quite a history behind him as well. I'm not sure how much of it he made up or, or, but really, thank you very much, Mr. Uli, for being here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you. That was, that was, well done. Well done. That was fantastic.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, with that, we will, we're gonna break for a reception outside, and then we will adjourn to closed session over in the Board of Supervisors' small conference room. Mr. Gazoni, if you can announce the items that we've got today.
Chair and supervisors, we have three items. Two are conference with labor negotiators, SEIU Local 620, and the Civil Attorneys Union of Santa Barbara. Agency representatives are the county executive officer and human resources director. The third item is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Civil Attorneys Association versus county of Santa Barbara, an unfair practice charge with the Public Employment Relations Board.
Okay, we're going to start closed session at 11:15. It'll be over there. Now, Mr. Gazoni, do we need to come back over here and adjourn, or can we adjourn from over there?
You, you are noticed. I would recommend coming back here to adjourn and report out.
Okay. So we will be entering closed session 11:15. All right, well, since we have four here, and I'm not sure if Supervisor Wolf is coming back over, so we will go ahead and proceed, and we will reconvene our meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Gazoni, can we have a report from closed session, please?
During closed session today, the board was noticed for three items, conference with labor negotiators, both Service Employees International Union, Local 620, and Civil Attorneys Association. Both conferences occurred with nothing to report. Also, the third item was conference with legal counsel concerning the Civil Attorneys Association, Public Employment Relations Board unfair practice charge. That conference occurred also with nothing to report. That ends the closed session report.
Okay, and Supervisor Carball, you'd like to close?
Yes, I think just to follow up on- To follow up on what Mr. Shane Stark said during public comment, it's fitting, based on the service of Marv Levine, both in the military and in county council's office in the past, for Santa Barbara County, that we adjourn in his memory in light of his passing, so.
All right, thank you very much, and we will have, this, this meeting will now be adjourned, and we will meet next Tuesday in Santa Maria on the 14th. We're out.